Good evening. I will now call to order the July 22, 2024 Clark County School Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any questions about tonight's agenda? May have a motion. Anybody? Somebody?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any questions about tonight's consent agenda? I do want to make sure we had talked about the safety plan being part of consent agenda, but then Renee came up with a great idea, so we will talk about that in closed session. Yeah, okay. Any tonight, and then any questions about consent agenda? May I have a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Brenda, your favorite topic?
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on July 10. They reviewed several items, and one of them was the review of the updated FY '24 revenue projection. Renee has up there on the screen for you. So this report is based on estimated revenue projections as of June 30, 2024, and March ADM of 1,876.
Excuse me, is your microphone on?
It is, but is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. I'll try to remember.
Y'all getting old.
Okay. So in looking at the revenue estimate for FY '24, as you can see, that top section is actually the, it shows the local revenue, and those are estimated to come in at approximately $61,000 more than the current revised revenue budget. That's mainly due to increased dual enrollment at Laurel Ridge Community College, and at $55,000, and an increase in tuition revenue received of 17,000 or almost 18,000, and then an increase in facility rental fees of about 11,000. So that makes up the additional 61,000 that's expected in revenue from local sources. And this is for FY '24. And then the middle section is actually the state revenue, and that is estimated at this point in time to decrease by about 271,000, mainly due to the Virginia Department of Education's estimated decrease in the sales tax. There's also a school security officer reduction of 30,000, and that's due to a match for that particular grant. So that's the changing, the changes in the state revenue, which I don't believe there was much, if any, change from last month.
That's not gonna, I just want to make sure I remember from my notes. That's not affecting that grant, though, for us. Does that?
No, no, we, well, we still have that grant, the SSO grant we did receive, but there was a match in fiscal '24 that we had not anticipated. That was not part of '23.
Okay. All right, so, and this is '24?
And this is '24.
Okay.
Right, right. So that's the state section, and then the bottom section is the federal funding. That's actually estimated to increase about 69,000 at this point, from what we're seeing. We have additional title grant funds coming in of about 56,000 and 12,000 or so in the health workforce grant. So overall, what that means is, overall, when you take those three components and compare it, we're expecting about a decrease of 134,000 in the operating revenue. This is operating revenue for fiscal '24. So that's where we are for the school operating revenue. We have any questions about that?
Okay, so, okay. Okay, got it. All right, yep.
Then beyond that, we looked at, or the Finance Committee looked at the corresponding FY '25 year expenses that you approved in the consent agenda. And I'll just kind of summarize those. The current estimates in the expenses project a year-end operating fund remaining balance to be about 400,000 right now, is what we're thinking. That's estimating the remaining FY '24 expenses to be posted. A lot of things like utility expenses and other services that were provided in June have not been paid for. Those will be paid out. And so what we're trying to do is get an idea about what we would have left over budget-wise in the expense budget, and we're thinking right now it might be about 400,000. And that's on the operating. The Food Service Fund, when we looked at those expenses for fiscal '24, those look to be in good shape. The Food Service Fund is able to maintain its own, meaning the revenue has come in to cover all expenditures. And then the Capital Projects Fund, the committee did look at that briefly, and there are many of those FY '24 projects that are being finished up. And one of the big projects, large HVAC expenditures for the Cooley Elementary School project. Now, that's the revenue that you have up, but that's okay.
What? I'm sorry, I wasn't following.
That was all the revenue, but, but.
Oh, it's a different?
Right, that's, it's, the expenditure report is part of the consent agenda. But, but basically, the overall message was that we are in good shape right now for the expenses. We expect to have about 400,000 right now. That's what we're seeing in available funds at the end of the year. But that's going to change, you know, somewhat, give or take, because of the remaining expenses to be booked that we don't, we don't know exactly what they are. We're trying to estimate those. And then also, there would be any audit adjustments that come along this fall.
Okay, so we still have expenses for '24 that we need to take care of.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any encumbrance or whatever? Like, I think we talked about that, too.
We're working on the encumbrances to zero those out. If they are finished, if a project or an expenditure is done, and that contract is done, and we still have encumbrances. I know Mike Legan Purchasing is working on reaching out to those persons that he, you know, that would have created that purchase order to zero any of those encumbrances out. But I believe that that number took care of any encumbrances as well, so.
You mean, it's minus those? The 400?
Right, the 400,000 already takes those into account, and encumbrances that are still there.
Okay. And then all our paid leave out, like, all that stuff's been taken care of?
Right.
So essentially, it's these little leftover?
Right. Utility bills, those types of things.
Okay, so then by our August financial meeting, committee meeting, we should have a?
We will have a better understanding. It won't be the final. We do sometimes have expenses in August that get booked back to the previous year because there might be some straggler invoices come in, and an invoice that maybe, I don't know, got lost in the mail, or someone maybe didn't process necessarily in a timely manner, and then that invoice would be found and then put into the system and booked back to fiscal '24. So there are some, but there'll be less in August than what we're expecting to see in July.
Okay, so, so just know when we have our committee meetings, like, I, it would be really nice to finally understand that final number, even though I know we're going to be in '25, and '24 is going to be shifting because of all these little things. But just because this has been an interesting year, I would just love to know what that final number is.
We will try to nail it down as best we can.
Okay.
We will have, we should have the payroll accruals. Well, the payroll accruals actually were already posted in this number, so we won't have those. But yeah, any remaining leave payouts, anything like that, will have already been posted by August, by the August meeting, so.
Okay.
Those will be done, and any of the utilities that get paid in July, those will be done as well.
Okay, and then I trust Mike Leg, like, wholeheartedly. But then, and I don't understand his process all the time, but then the other thing I just, like, confirmed, so I feel better and can sleep, is that there aren't going to be any surprises with any of these capital projects that we're finishing up now, and any extra money that maybe might come up or something like that, right?
Right.
And maybe that's never an issue, but I, just, this final number is sort of important to me, I think. So I just want to make sure.
Right, I've spoke, I actually spoke with Mike today about that, again as well. I spoke to him last week, and he is reviewing all the encumbrances. And actually, Nancy and I will be looking at the capital projects in particular, that particular fund, to make sure that there are no encumbrances left. Because all those, if there are encumbrances that are valid for a project that is still undergoing, that will be pushed to '25, and it will show up then in '25. It should be zero in '24. So we'll be pulling reports and making sure all those encumbrances are zeroed out. There shouldn't be any, by August, we should have those encumbrances zeroed.
Okay, and I know we're going into '25. I still want visibility to '24 until the books, like, final.
Absolutely, we still have the, you know, we've got the audit and all that stuff to go through. That will be ongoing right through October.
Okay, all right, great.
We hope to have some, some more final numbers before then.
Yeah. Any questions for Ms. Bennett?
Yes, so as a new board member, these changes in revenues from the state and Fed, is that a normal thing? And do we, do we always anticipate that? Or do we anticipate any more for the rest of the year?
We don't really, we won't know those final state numbers, and they are, because most of that hinges on those final sales tax numbers, which is what they had reduced our expected revenue, was based on reduced sales tax, expected sales tax for the state from the DOE. So we get those sales taxes that come in, and they come back to us as locality, as school division. We get those twice a month, the middle and the end of the month. So, so by the time the Finance Committee meets again in August, we will have a better idea of, you know, the Department of Education has estimated our sales tax numbers to be down by that amount in the revenue report. But we'll know a little bit more about how accurate they were. And that is pretty typical, actually. And then the federal, on the federal piece, a lot of times those title grants and things do fluctuate. It's not unusual for those to fluctuate, a few thousand dollars one way or the other. I think some of those title grants are based on enrollment, and those other factors that vary during the year, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, well.
Oh, is there more?
Yes, there's more. So that, that was the FY '24 reports that the Finance Committee reviewed. And then they did take, we did take a quick look, or we noted for fiscal '25. Yes, that was the report we looked at. That has not changed. It's the same report we looked at last month, and we don't have any data pushed in there because we were looking on July 10. So we really didn't have anything posted to '25. But what we did want to mention was, the Virginia Department of Education file did project a decrease in revenue of about $80,000 compared to this adopted budget. But subsequent to that, we were able to secure the SSO grant for an additional 40,000. So that kind of brings that reduction down to 40,000. And we feel like there is excess, what do I say, salary and vacancy savings to pick up that 40,000. That should not be a problem at all. So does that, you almost look like you have a question?
No, I'm just, I just sit here and thinking. It's kind of hard to figure it out when everything is changing. We almost need a, need a built-in cushion for the changes in the state, but.
If only.
What's that?
If only.
Yeah, I know.
As part of these, these numbers, we have some leave payout that's hitting '25, right? And so, because we only did half in '24, and we're doing half '25. So it'd be good to know how much, remind me how much, and then how this is gonna, because I don't think it's a small number.
We've got, I thought that was a discussion that was still ongoing. As of the Finance Committee meeting, we talked about that being, you know, leave payout, processing the leave payout, since we would have the budget in '24 if it's.
Oh, that's right, you're right. But, okay, so depending on how that goes, I just want to make sure that, if we push it to '25, then.
Right, we should be in good shape and not have to carry over leave balances to, or leave payout from '24 to '25.
Okay, so even more of a reason to be as close as possible to that final number?
Right.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yep, and then do have some action items. So we have some supplemental appropriation requests, and two of them are for fiscal '25, this new year that we're, that we're just starting into. One of them is, they're all involving grants. One of them is a George Mason University grant. The school division received a $4,000 grant. They did spend some of the, some of the grant funds were spent in fiscal '24, but there's $3,300 that are left, that's left, and that's expected to be spent in fiscal '25. It'll be used for STEM club lesson writing training. There's some lesson writing workshops and stipends that go along with that. But this request is for an FY '25 supplemental expenditure and revenue appropriation of $3,300. If you want, I'll go down through these, and then afterwards.
Yep.
Okay, so the second grant is a Claude Moore Foundation grant. This is also an FY '25 grant. It's in the amount of $30,783. It is from the Claude Moore Foundation. It's a reimbursable grant, and the funds are to be used for CNA course expenses, and they would be spent out by June 30 of 2025. And so that is for $30,783. Then the final supplemental appropriation request actually is a fiscal '24 appropriation request, and it's for the Capital Projects Fund. This is for a school safety and security grant. Mr. Trenary was successful in receiving this one-time grant of $127,384. It's for school safety and security. And that, those grant funds, they can be used for purchasing equipment, installing equipment, software, onsite training, anything to improve the safety and security of the school buildings. And there are two pieces to this grant. $75,000 comes from the state. The other 51,000 is coming from federal funds. And since the state already sent the grant funds to us, that, that revenue piece, we would like to go ahead and get all of it appropriated in fiscal '24. And then it will, it will become part of the Capital Projects' request to roll forward into '25 in its entirety, and then it will be spent out in '25.
Any questions about the grants?
That one that just ran out?
Sorry?
Security?
And this one's different because it's equipment.
This is for Capital Projects' for security.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so last, we have two motions here. So if someone, if there are no additional questions, if someone can give me a motion for the first one.
I move that the FY '25 school operating fund budgeted expenditure and appropriation be increased $34,083, and that the revenue budget and appropriation be increased by the same amount for the purpose of receiving additional local revenue of $3,300 from George Mason University, and $30,783 from the Claude Moore Foundation, covering the FY '25 expenses as outlined in the Finance Committee report.
So a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next motion, please.
I move that the FY '24 school capital projects fund budgeted expenditure and appropriation be increased $127,384, and that the revenue budget and appropriation be increased by the same amount for the purpose of receiving additional state revenue of $127,384, covering the FY '24 expenses as outlined in the Finance Committee report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'd like to note that I did that without reading glasses or any type of glass corrective lenses.
Wait, did you read it from up there?
Yes, my laptop's dead.
Oh, my gosh.
So please keep those things up.
Can you make a little bigger? Well done.
I know. My vision is impressive.
Yeah, it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, superintendents update. Dr. Lamanna? Can you put your mic on, since everybody else is getting in trouble?
Right here?
Yep, and then, yep, perfect.
Okay. Yep. Well, the first couple of weeks was kind of getting the lay of the land. Let me go over a few things that I attended to. I visited all the schools and met with the available building leaders at that time, the ones that weren't on vacation. It's kind of a tough time to meet people because of that. Met with the central office staff and the joint administrative service staff to review their, and understand their roles and responsibilities. I want to say, too, that as I was doing that, what really struck me was the level of, and impressed me, was the level of collaboration that I see between the county and the, and the division. It's really quite, quite exceptional. And you could see that as I went through discussing their responsibilities. Also participated in the Finance Committee meeting. Met with Chris Boyce, County Exec, and Sheriff Sumption. With Sheriff Sumption, I reviewed the SOR assignments in our schools and established communication channels between the division and the sheriff to make sure we had that in place. Also plan to meet with Sheriff White and Mr. Weiss coordinating that at this point in time. That's kind of the activities. Just to go over some other information, the Virginia Literacy Plan has been submitted to the Department of Education and is posted on the division website. Dr. Neal will provide additional details at a future board meeting to go over that and answer any questions that you might have. As far as dates is concerned, we have new teachers beginning August 8th. August 6th, yeah, it says 6 right there. Why did I say 8? Yes, August 6th? No, you get, I don't know where 8 came from. Returning teachers begin August 12th. Convocation is August 13th. We have lunch at 11:45. Keynote speaker at 1, Dr. Jill Seiler. School Board office is going to be closed on August 2 for carpet cleaning. And August 20 is the big day, the first day of school. And I'm glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Thank you for stepping in for us during this period of transition. It sounds like you're keeping us all rolling, and, and what we've said before, I think you're bringing a lot of value to us so that everyone else can continue with doing their job rather than filling holes and, and take needed breaks.
I appreciate that. It's enjoyable. And I stay with my commitment, do no harm.
I echo the sentiment. So tell me quickly, convocation, what time have the board members always come?
Usually for the keynote.
Keynote, right? And then the superintendent speaks right before the keynote?
I think we're doing that afterwards this year.
Oh.
So the keynote speaker is first, and then we'll do the fun things with, you know, the years of service, and all that, is that correct?
Okay, so then for us, that would be around 1, okay.
But you're welcome to come to lunch.
Oh, thanks. Okay, perfect. Audience comments, do we have any? World Language textbook adoption. Dr. Seal, do you want to speak to that? Oh, yeah, you're, you are speaking to. Yeah.
So good evening, everyone. I am doing this report this evening on behalf of Dr. Neal, who is at a federal grants conference as we speak. The World Language teachers reviewed curriculum and textbooks. The world language teachers reviewed curriculum and textbooks from three vendors. They were Carnegie Learning, Wayside Publishing, Savas, and Vista, excuse me, there were four vendors. These books were on display for public input, and we did not receive any comments or feedback from the community. Staff recommends the purchase of the Spanish and French books for both the high school and the middle school from Carnegie Learning. In addition to textbooks, the company offers more instructional materials and student activities, and through their digital platform, the teachers gain access to all levels of content, not just those that we purchase. A standout feature is the integrated audio visual component and a vast library of authentic resources. There were no funds in the FY twenty-five budget for a complete world language textbook adoption, as we did not anticipate our current company, Hoot and Mifflin, abandoning world language services as an option. So once we learned, um, that that company was no longer going to be supporting the world language, and these quotes started to come in, we did ask all of these vendors to enable us to do a multi-year contract to keep the, um, multi-year negotiation as a fit within our current budgeted textbook allocation. So the total cost of this seven-year program is ninety-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Carnegie Learning has agreed to bill us in three installments, so the cost for FY twenty-five would be forty-two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents. The cost for FY twenty-six would decrease to twenty-eight thousand forty dollars and seventeen cents, and the cost in FY twenty-seven will be twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents. And this does provide us with, uh, student additions, digital resources, teacher resources, and professional development. And again, the multi-year facet of the contract will keep us within our textbook budget that we had planned for, for the twenty-four, twenty-five instructional year. So happy to answer any questions as best I can.
Now, you said world languages, uh, do you have a particular selection? And is, are these texts, if you decide to add to it, decide to add Urdu to Spanish and French, will they provide these as part of an overwhelming contract?
Correct, it would be French and Spanish at both the middle school and the high school, and currently we were using digital licenses to provide textbooks for students. They will no longer exist because the Hoot and Mifflin company is no longer going to have world language as part of a option, which is how this whole conversation got started.
Interesting.
But just to give you an idea, this is a very hot commodity right now evidently, because in twenty twenty-four, we spent about eight thousand dollars on French and Spanish licenses for our students, so you can see how much pricing has increased.
Who was the committee that ultimately chose this one?
So I know Dr. Neal had representatives from both, um, the middle school and the high school, I know Ms. Blevins was on the committee, I know Tate Simmons was on the committee along with her, um, Mr. Potts was involved, am I missing anybody, Renee? Ms. Brewer, we made sure we had representation from both buildings and both subject areas.
Did they have a rubrics or something, or are they just?
They did, yes, they did. And this was their overwhelming choice, it was a unanimous choice to go with this vendor.
Okay. Don't like the price tag, but, you know. Um, any questions? Any other motion?
I move to approve Carnegie Learning for the world language textbook adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can someone help Ms. Kerhobert, please, and can someone else do the motion?
Usually these things have.
Hard to watch.
Oh, you do.
I love the challenge.
Madam Chairwoman, usually these things have a formatted thing that you have to recite, and we just got so used to Ms. Kerhobert doing this because she, you always give her the form.
Well, no, it's in here in Board Docs.
He's got the paper.
Yeah, we'll be sure to get you that copy, Mr. Wilson.
I'll get a crick in my neck reading it.
I'm really, I'm okay.
Um, okay, oh, so I'll talk, I'll speak to this. So for the August meeting, I think Renee has reached out to all of you. I had a conflict on the twenty-sixth, I will be out of the country celebrating a really big birthday milestone, um, and so I will not be here, so I'm hoping August nineteenth works for everybody. And Dr. Lamanna, I think August nineteenth works for you, okay. I was going to talk about wanting, so we need to talk about, I, I do want principals and stuff back in here, but I recognize that twentieth. Well, no, the nineteenth, August nineteenth, because they haven't been here all summer, but I also recognize twentieth as first day of school, so we'll talk about it more. Okay. Um, school board member comments. Oh, yeah, can we have a motion?
I move. Did I get that, okay? I moved to change the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four school board meeting to Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much. Um, school board member comments, Mr. Brumbeck.
I don't have any.
Okay, great. Mr. Wilson?
No, none.
Great. Mr. Kennedy?
I'm just going to say that, um, the superintendent's search is going goo- well, so we hope to, you know, have things in a, in good spot, hopefully by the end of the week, but we'll see. So, and, um, it's been good, it's been a good experience.
Excuse me, uh, for the information of the board, I will not be available next week, so be nice when we get wrapped us up.
Whatever we can do for you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm glad, I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll put peel and a grape, I'm going to put that on there, too.
Put it in your computer, too, you know, you young people all need these computers.
Listen, we can be there all night Friday night.
That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Kerhobert?
Uh, I just, I second, um, what Mr. Kennedy just said, it's, we've worked, we've been working really, really hard, all of us, and then I don't know how Mr. Brumbeck does it and gets up at five AM the next day to do your farm work, because it's, the, the nights have been late.
Have been very late.
Late, 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 and, um, I think it's been a great bonding experience for all of us, and I think that, um, we have very, we are all very different people, and, uh, it's been fun to get to know one another and, um, to work on this, and, and we're all really taking it seriously and, and trying to do our best, so I've enjoyed it.
Yeah, it has been really good. And we all get to pick on Mr. Wilson a lot, so that's like been pretty amazing.
Speak up.
No, it's actually been, it's been really great. HYA has done an amazing job, and I think the one thing we tax, ta- tasked them with is making this hard for us, and so they've really, they have made it hard for us. And we do all have different perspectives, but we have been really great at talking out loud and pros and cons, like, really, it's been a great, it's been a great experience. And absolutely the bonding, it's, it's been amazing. We've probably been inappropriate in some of our interviews, but that's okay. I think they appreciated it. Okay, may I have a motion to convene to close session, please?
And that one, seriously, isn't that something that has to be read out?
Yes. It's on your paper, okay. It's on your paper. Okay.
The bottom of the sheet.
Oh, hell, yes.
I move to convene a closed session.
I'll do it tonight.
Okay.
I move to convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters, including appointments and resignations pursuant to Code of Virginia, uh, is it five, two point two dash three seven one one A one, request for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code section two point two dash three seven one one A two for student, uh, two zero two five, two zero two five R one, and review, uh, plans related to school safety and security pursuant to Virginia Code section two point two three seven one one A one nine. The estimated time required for a closed session is thirty minutes, and action is expected.
Well done.
I thought so.
I second.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Great, thank you.
Hey, could you repeat that?
May I have a motion to reconvene to open session?
I move to reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, certification? Yep, that's...
Aye.
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 Aye, aye. Um, you have a motion about action?
Um, I move...
Do you have it?
To accept the personnel recommendations as presented.
Aye. Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the second one, Renee?
About the, um...
The, the, um... No, about the student. So, how do we... What student number is that?
Student one.
One three one one?
That's okay.
Okay. So, you want to do a motion for that?
Yes, I move that we accept the recommendation for student...
A.
A. For the religious exemption.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And then, the last one is security plan.
I move that we accept the security plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed. Thank you, everybody. A little turn.